Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Bellingham Select Board Meeting for December first, twenty twenty five. I asked that if you can, can you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the states of America, and to the public who stands one nation under God in this vote, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna start our meeting off, and then I'll just say something real quick. Then I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Martinez. We have the Bellingham Girls High School Volleyball Team. They really showed everybody who the man was and won the state championship title, went on a tear. Right? You guys are pretty good, huh? All right. You don't realize I work a Taylor Swift song in every select board meeting, and your coach said I wouldn't work one in. Apparently, I gotta watch the music video for the man. There we go. I said it twice. All right, Mr. Martinez, go ahead.
Great. Well, to the town of Bellingham, to the ladies here, to Coach Steve Mantegani, we're very proud of you, this town. Probably hard work. At town meeting, we read this proclamation. Unfortunately, you weren't there because you're celebrating your annual banquet. So I just wanted to read tonight to you ladies, and then I'm going to announce your names. Tonight, we proudly recognize the twenty twenty five Bellingham High School Girls Volleyball Team for their historic achievement in capturing the state championship on November fifteenth against the number two seeded Cardinals of Joseph Case High School in three games to one. Under the leadership of head coach Steve Mantegani and team captains Val Nolan, Jacoby Houston, Mia Malani, and Sofia Soto, this outstanding squad posted an impressive twenty-two and two overall win-loss record. Their commitment to excellence on the court, combined with strong teamwork and community spirit, reflected the very best of our town. On behalf of the town of Bellingham, we congratulate these remarkable student athletes, their coaches and families, for bringing home a state title and inspiring all of us with their dedication, perseverance, and Black Hawk spirit. Now I would like to announce, as I usually do before the beginning of all of our matches, captain number one, Sofia Soto. Number three, Alyssa Rancourt. Number four, Aubrey Calery. Number five, Maddie Di Olivera. Number six, Haley Dettore. Number seven, Ella Barreto. Number eight, Caitlin Hebert. Number nine, Mia Malani. Number ten, Stephanie Pencho. Number eleven, Lila McGilbury. Number twelve, Jacoby Houston. Number thirteen, Maggie Maderos. Number fourteen, Kaylee Simpson. Number fifteen, Captain Val Nolan. Number sixteen, Maria Bartuca. Head coach Steve Mantegani. Caleb Martinez, assistant coach Justin Mantegani, assistant coach Zach Mantegani, devastation Madison Mantegani. Congratulations, very much. Phenomenal job. Ladies, unbelievable making our town proud. You're welcome to stay through a select board meeting and see what it's like. Love to have you stay, but you certainly don't have to. We know it's a school night. Oh, Mr. Hamway, sorry, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John. My last interview with Coach Man again, I suggested that I a hundred and ninety, a hundred and ninety-five points were scored in those four sets. Bellingham total one oh five, Case had ninety. They're all accounted for in my notes, and I thought it would be fitting if he wanted these as a memento or memorabilia down the road. Congratulations, congratulations to these girls. They're not only great volleyball players, but they're great role models for the young girls growing up in Bellingham.
Add a little color. So we use the word perseverance. In the first two games, and volleyball is the best of five, in the first two games, the girls went into overtime. They were losing. And they dug in really deep, and they ended up winning the first set twenty-eight, twenty-six. Was it, do I write?
Twenty-seven, twenty-five.
Twenty-seven, twenty-five, and then twenty-eight, twenty-six. And then they were, they're kind of ahead in that third set, like nine, whatever, whatever, and they kind of went, you know, get a little tired, I think. But they dug in deep. And come that fourth set, there was no, there was no getting by Bellingham. There was no, the girls really dug in deep, made us all very proud. The crowd was just going wild. It was a lot of fun. We really, really appreciate it. Because it does the town a lot of good when you have something this special. We haven't had a state championship in a long time. So you girls, we really do appreciate it. Appreciate your hard work. There's no pressure, but there are a lot of girls coming back next year, too. We're losing a few seniors, so there's a, there's a, you know, big expectations for you.
We'll celebrate this one.
Celebrate this one first, enjoy it, that's for sure. And if you want to have a float in the parade.
They would.
But, because I already mentioned it, I talked to Mrs. Altamonte, because she's coordinating the parade, and it'd be a great, a great addition to have a a float of some sort in the parade. Right? Just leave someone get a flatbed and.
I'll give you a call.
Awesome. That's great.
All right, moving on to public hearing. Do I have to make a motion?
We'll give you open the property tax classification. Public hearing continues on November twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Wait a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close nine.
I make a motion to reaffirm the residential factor of point eight seven for fiscal twenty twenty-six tax classification purposes.
Second. And it's close.
All those in favor? Aye. Close nine.
And last, I make a motion to move to the, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close nine. I vote. All right, seven, a little ahead, but that's, we want to take off thirty fifteen.
Maybe the time.
Oh, okay.
Maybe the time.
Chad Kelly and Doug Martin on the benefits of adopting the Community Preservation Act.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. Thanks for having us. I guess we'll start by introducing ourselves.
Yep, so my name's Chad Kelly. I live at twenty-six Saddleback Hill Road here in Bellingham. I have been involved in the community because I think volunteerism is important. Obviously, you guys do tour, you wouldn't be sitting over there. And most recently on the Open Space Committee. I'm sorry for my voice. It is the season. But I've also been on different boards, whether it was softball or Volume Educational Foundation, things like that. And for me, just seeing some projects that could happen here in Bellingham, I, we're going to talk about the different parts of this hit. For me, it's more, it's outdoor spaces, whether it's trails and things like that, or it's fields and things here in town. So for me, that's where my slant is coming from, I guess you could say.
My name's Doug Martin. I live at Tenview Pre-Road. Been in Bellingham almost thirteen years now. I grew up here. Similar to Chad, you know, as my kids were growing up, was involved in coaching, scouts, all that community organization stuff. Recently got on the Parks Commission, and now I'm representative on the Open Space Rec Plan for the Parks Commission. So I think one thing that, you know, both Chad and I continue to talk about, what we see in Open Space Plan and through other things is is that there's a lot of projects that I think everyone wants to happen, right? And a lot of them are small and things that could be done, you know, either in-house or just by volunteer action. But a lot of them are, you know, bigger capital projects. So the question is, how do those get funded, right? And the one common theme that we keep hearing from other municipalities is, have you looked at CPA, which is Communities Preservation Act? So we felt like we've kind of taken upon ourselves to kind of go through it, learn about it, and then hopefully present it to you today. Kind of get your thoughts and feelings. And then we'll, I guess we'll go from there.
Yeah, what we're kind of doing is a little bit of a tour of different committees at this hit. So I met with the Historic Commission. We just got an email back today about from Planning Board. So just kind of gauging what each group that could be impacted by it, what they would do if they had CPA money.
Yeah. All right, so real quick, you know, if, what, what is CPA? What is the Community Preservation Act? It was established back in the early two thousands, I believe. To allow communities to establish funds for the use of historic preservation, open space and recreation, and community housing. So those are three core buckets. To date, two hundred and one communities have signed up for it. Seventy percent of mass residents and the ones I put on there, those are our local neighbors, Medway, Franklin, Melis, Holliston, Oakdale, Hopkins, and Ashland. I think some of those you can, you know, I mean, when you think of Medway, think of Franklin and the other towns. They all have these parks and open spaces and historic preservation projects that we've all seen. And that's, most of that is due to CPA funding. So here's kind of a chart of what we're missing out on. This, you can see some of the early adopters, Medway and Holliston, for example, and Hopkins. What they've collected since two thousand and one. And their percentages change, so we'll kind of get into the map of how the surcharge percentage works. But you can see what they brought in on revenue just from the surcharge, but then also what the trust is distributed. And we'll get into that, gets played out soon. So what are we thinking for Bellingham? So basically, what the CPA says is that we can have a percentage between pretty much one or a half percent to three percent annual surcharge. So we talked to the Community Preservation Coalition, and they recommended one and a half percent surcharge for a community like Bellingham. We'll get into what that entails, but essentially it's less than seventy dollars per average at Bellingham Residential Assessment per year. And then there's different exemptions that we could do. So we're kind of recommending, let's, let's do all the exemptions. So the exemptions would be first hundred thousands of assessed property value that would come off. Look at the same thing for commercial and industrial as well as residential, and then exemption for low income. So here's kind of that map, right? So right now, if you look at the left-hand column, the sample tax bill without CPA. So we have average single-family house in town costs just over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a tax rate of twelve dollars and fifty-six cents per, per thousand, gives you an average or an annual tax bill of five thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. So that's kind of what everyone's paying now, right? So and then you look at your sample tax bill with the CPA. So we're going to take that first hundred thousand off the taxable value. So we're going to take a hundred thousand off the four fifty-nine. So that means your CPA taxable value is three fifty-nine, six oh seven. And your tax basis for that value is four thousand five seventeen. You take one and a half percent of that tax base value, that gives you sixty-eight dollars. And then now, let's add that sixty-eight with the total property tax of five thousand seven hundred and seventy-three. That's your annual property tax with the CPA. That make sense? And then here's kind of just a rough, you know, chart of assessed property value minus the hundred thousand exemption. What, you know, on average, if your property was assessed at two hundred thousand, you paid nineteen dollars a year. And if you're at a million, you pay a hundred and seventy dollars a year. It kind of gives you a good range. So based on that one and a half percent with all the exemptions that I talked about, so a hundred thousand off for residential, a hundred thousand off for commercial, industrial, and the low and moderate income exemptions. We're looking to bring in six hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. That's all, again, based on today's numbers. So that would change as as we go. What that does not include is the disbursements that we would get from the, from the state. So I think Chad will kind of get into how that plays out and how they collect their money, but that's another piece that we're not, isn't accounted for there, but that would be added. So the biggest difference between CPA and standard tax rate is it's a dedicated pot of money that goes to those three buckets that we talked about, the open space and recreation, housing, preservation, and historic preservation. The, the things I like to highlight are that the funds raised will receive an additional state contribution, like Chad will get into. That, I think it's really important to say that the community gets to decide on how the funds are spent. So just because they elect to enact the CPA doesn't mean that it's a blank check, right? There'll be a CPA committee. Chad will kind of go over how that's established. That committee then will make recommendations to you, you all, and then you'll put that on the warrant for town meeting, and then the, the, the community will vote to say, yea or nay on whatever the project is. So I think that's really important. It's not just a blank check. It's, it's going to go to something that the community wants. And the other big thing, too, is that there's a lot of grants out there where you need, you need community matching funds. So CPA is used a lot of times to help put up those matching funds, which would then help us up to other federal or state money. So these are all the good things that are available for, when you do a CPA. And I think the last thing, and I started off by saying this, is that Jesse's going to come up and talk about all the good things that you've done with roads, right? Spent a lot of money, but I'm sure there's a ton more money to spend, right? So that's just roads. Never mind all the other infrastructure needs and all the other things just operationally that are going to strain the general budget, which doesn't leave room for any of these open space recreation historic preservation projects under that existing tax limit. So how, you know, the CPA is definitely a way that we can bring in that money and enhance, you know, the community of Bellingham.
So Doug gave you kind of the general background and kind of the numbers. I'm going to give you kind of where we, where it could go from here. So if we were to convince the Select Board to allow the members of the town to put this on the town meeting, which would be, and the timeline is up, yeah, I'm not going to read every single timeline, dude, but in the May meeting, if that was put on the May meeting to allow, that would then allow us to put it on the election ballot in November. We do have more than one way to do this, and it'll explain it here. If it was to pass a town meeting, you do have to file, as it says, a CPA ballot question committee, state approval, that's kind of minutia stuff. If it doesn't pass town meeting, so if we go to town meeting and it does not pass, you still have the option to do a citizen's petition. So there, that's in saying that there's more than one way for that to happen. That would be the other way for it to happen. And then, and you'd follow the same steps, as it says, see a ballot vote on Election Day, Tuesday, November third, twenty twenty-six. If it passes, then you have to form your own community preservation committee, May of twenty-seven, collection would start. So that just gives you more of the timeline should we move forward with this. And then how they disperse. So you do have to have a CPA committee, and as Doug said earlier, it doesn't just you go to the next slide. It doesn't just, they don't just make the decision, it still has to go through through you folks and through the town meeting part. How you have to spend it, it's pretty minimal. You do have to spend historic preservation, open space, and affordable ten percent. You can save it from year to year, but it is earmarked for that. But the bulk of the seventy percent of it, you get to decide what those are on. You can bond some things as well. Some communities have done that. Midway did that. If you've ever been to the high school, when they redid the fields there in Quinterf, and they bonded that. Every community is a little bit different. And then the last piece, state distributes matching funds. For me, that's the biggest piece to this, like, we're not just using our money. If you look at from year to year, it does change how much the trust distributes, but it was as high as forty-nine percent and as low, I think, as nineteen percent when I did it out.
This, this past distribution was sixteen point.
Sixteen. So that's been the lowest since. But if you look over the years, and it does change based on that. How they disperse, as I just mentioned here a second ago, I actually already mentioned that, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna make you, not gonna read that to you again. All right, so we are both on the Open Space Committee. And again, as Doug said, we found that when we run into things, now we've done some volunteer stuff, we repainted signs that this place picked up. Yeah, picked up trash. We've done a lot of that, and repainted some things. But in general, there's more that needs to be done. If you drive by certain fields in town, if you go down near Stallbrook and you go to where the, that baseball field is or should be, or the behind Stallbrook, there's just a lot of spaces that have been neglected. So for us, we did a whole, we looked, looked at the entire town. If you ever have a few minutes and you want to look at some pictures of stuff around town that really was in disrepair, and DPW's actually done a really good job of trying to address each one of those, but there, that's only one small group. We need, we need a little more help with that. So future projects, so for open space and recreation, there's a whole list of things there. I was on a committee, Mike Reed, with, through the school department, to look at what to do with the fields up between the middle school and the high school. There definitely needs to be some work done there, whether it's the basketball courts, the baseball field, that type of thing. And what we kept, kept coming back to is, well, how are we going to fund this? And it never seemed to be the right time. This would allow you to use some of that money for a project like that, which I feel like we've kind of just pushed and pushed and pushed down the road. But canoe launching, improved trail access, et cetera, that would be the open space recreation part. The historic preservation, when I met with the Historic Committee, they, they, they talked about the fire truck. You've probably heard about that already. And they would see some other situations. You can use it also, so for instance, our town halls would be considered historic in Medway, and I think Mendon, they redid the roof, so which is a regular maintenance thing, but that qualifies under this, you could use funds for that as well. Under affordable housing. So one of the pieces here, I think people, I know when housing comes up and affordable housing, and do we have enough, and communities are fighting over this a little bit, is it doesn't just allow you to add more affordable housing. For me, the keeping existing affordable units is probably the biggest key for this part. In some communities, they've used that to fund a court, like a part-time coordinator, so it's not just to use it specifically for like rehabilitation and convert open space. And I would, if, if I could employ you to read, to go anywhere, it would be the last slide. I think, do you guys get a copy of these?
Yeah.
That might be the best website on any topic I've ever been to. You can sort by towns, by projects, and just see what other towns have done. I could list off everything Medway and Hollison, everyone's done. But it's, you'd be surprised what you can use CPA money for. And I think, I would never think, like, historically, you can just put a roof on a building and that would count. But if you can get funds back for that, to do that, I think that's a, for me, it's a no-brainer.
Any questions?
I do. So when you start, when you set the percentage, right? Does it ebb and flow? You come back as a group and say, we want to go up, and we want to go down, like, is that something that you negotiate? Every year and set?
No, so when, once you set it, once you, once it's approved by town meeting, and again, at, at the ballot box, then that's the percentage. So in order to change that again, you would need to go through the same process. It would go on town meeting warrant, and then again, at the ballot box.
And some communities have done that. I believe when we talked to the Coalition, it was like a five-year, once you put it in, I think there's like a five-year window where you can't change, and then after that, you can, you have the flexibility. There was some.
The communities that, again, if you go on that site, there's a whole list of ones that have decreased. There's also ones that have increased. The ones that have decreased generally are like communities on the Cape, where initially, when they enacted it, you know, sewer, you know, no, sewer wasn't a big thing. Now they're trying to enact sewer, so it was kind of a give and take, right? All right. We'll take some off the CPA so we can charge more for the sewer of the Cape, that kind of stuff. So that, that's kind of what you're saying, and that, so it's never one like one size. It's, you know, it could change, ebb and flow based on what the community's needs are.
Thank you.
Chair, question. Proceededly, how does the committee, the CPA committee get, is it the Select Board's decision? Do you know how, how, how does a committee get selected?
That would be, I believe, Joe, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think that would be similar how you do all your other committees, right?
I think we would.
With the exception that some of the elected boards, like you have to have a member from Conservation Commission or Planning Board, or if you had a housing authority or partnership from them. So there would be some members and at-large members that the Select Board could appoint, but some of the others would have representatives from those boards.
And let's say that this gets enacted, and then the funds grow, and there's a need for eight hundred thousand dollars for X, Y, Z project. Town's in favor of it, goes to town meeting, because it's approved by the town, as you said. Is that a majority, or is that a two-thirds vote? Joe, do you know? I'm just curious as to how the mechanics look a little bit.
So would be majority, but also the, the bonding is a little different than bonding authorized by the town, if you had a borrowing article that you're coming for a new building. So those, those vote percentages do change compared to, say, a similar bonding question. But, you know, they, they end up being majority.
Just wondering how difficult, you know, once you get the money, how difficult, because, you know, how difficult it is to get the turf field years ago, right? And we had to go behind that to get it. They need to see you do all this work, and then all of a sudden, you know, there's a dozen people there that don't want whatever. For whatever reason, and you don't get, because it's got to be a two-thirds. So I'm just curious how difficult it is once you've set your eyes on a project, and it's a really good project, how difficult it's going to be approved. The other thing I have questioned in the earlier slide, you had the amount of money, you had the towns, and you had, like, with Medway and Ashland, and all of them, over time. It would be great to see that same slide on how much they've the state has contributed to that bucket. I don't think I saw that in the.
So no, on the Coalition.
You know what I'm talking, you know where I'm going, like.
Like the trust.
Overall, it looked like Medway threw the taxation, the CPA raised X amount of dollars. It would be great to see what the matching from the state was.
It's on there.
Is it?
So it has this, this. Yeah, if you.
This is going to slide, so.
Yeah, the surcharge revenue, so that's what you, we would.
That the surcharge revenue?
And then the trust distribution is what you get from the state.
Right.
So that makes sense?
Since it was an.
It does.
And you can look on the Community Preservation website, there's a database on there. You can look at every single town by year, how much they got, and it does fluctuate.
And knowing it first started, because we were looking into this many years ago, it was, the percentage was pretty high.
Yes.
And over time, it's, as more.
Diminish quite a bit.
The, the amount that the fund gives out is directly relation to the amount of housing that sells in that particular year. Because it's a.
Across the state.
Across state, so.
Yes, registered deeds adds a fee to it, so that's how they get the money.
So it's already money that are.
Yeah, you have.
We get a bigger pie, or things from the state.
Yeah.
That obviously has more communities joining, you know, a decrease.
It decreases a lot, could, yeah.
But then they also, anyone that has a full three percent surcharge, they'll get more in a match than, than others, like a higher percentage, not just more because they put in more, but, you know, we have slightly higher percentage.
And we picked one and a half just based on what was recommended to us. Obviously, there's flexibility.
There's also sensitivity in the town.
Of course, yeah. I mean, and listen, this is more money. We, it's, you can say that any three different ways, but it still means.
At the end of the day, we could all say yes, but town meeting's going to determine whether.
Sure, yeah.
And that, that's, I think that's what I like about it, too. It's not just a one-all town meeting, and that's it. I think it's, they, the voters have two chances, right? So they have town meeting, where, correct me if I'm wrong, would you get maybe ten percent of voters if that?
You're probably right, yeah.
Depends, depends on suddenly.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, you gotta, I don't know if you guys remember the warehouse memorandum.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we ran out of clickers.
Yes.
And we had to go to raising hands.
Yes.
If, if, I mean, Mr. Goyette and Mr. Martinez, you know, worked on it.
Yeah.
You know, if this is something that you guys, or that you guys want to push.
Yeah.
It's very doable to, to get a higher percentage to where, I mean, we literally ran out of clickers. I mean, I've never, I've never heard of that.
Yeah.
So it, it is, it is doable. If you, you hit, I mean, I think Mr. Goyette did a lot with social media. He was on literally every Facebook page, and he wasn't just doing posts, he was making videos.
Right.
You know, he was showing where he was. I mean, you got, you have open space. I mean, go to Medway. This is, this is what we did. That's, this is what happened with CPA funding. You've got to show. This is, this is what we did. That's what, this is what happened with CPA funding. You've gotta show. That there's, there's something there. It's, it's one hundred percent good. I mean, if you, I mean, Mr. Goyette, I think that was a. I mean, I think only like three percent said no.
I mean, you have any clickers on it, just to give you.
Just doing it more though, raise.
I think that's one of the last things Larry had to do was see a lot of more clickers.
Yeah.
Um.
But but I guess what I'm saying is like, they'll they'll get two shots to to vote on it.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
You know, yeah, they'll get two shots.
I don't think there's anything lost.
Oh, I know you're probably asking for us either yea or nay, but regardless, we say no, even if they know. They can still go to, you know, and get on the warrant, can't you?
Yes. I guess just put a warrant.
Put a warrant.
It's just, it's just a matter of whether we support it or not.
Yeah, I I think obviously, I mean, you know better than we do, it comes, it means more if if you support it.
Yes, in finance committee, the same thing.
Yeah, sure.
And you know, you're very passionate about this. I've sat on these committees with you and I know that this is a long time coming and I appreciate the passion you have with it. I also know our town is very interested in restoring, restoring and preserving our history. We're very much passionate about that. This is an opportunity to do it that way. So it's kind of exciting to see what happens with this. Um because we do, like you said, Chad, we keep kicking these things down the road and then they get, they get. Turned off. So I do appreciate the passion and dedication behind it.
Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't grow up here. We've been here twenty-plus years and we picked Bellingham because it's a small town. The schools are a little bit smaller too. I live right near the high school and middle school, so like, I to preserve that. Uh in a town like this, where you see warehouses and things like that going up, I think. For me, that's.
It's almost coexist, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
This and and some of that, so that I receive that possibility.
Yeah.
I I'll, I'll just re- reaffirm what I said. You know, you guys, if you wanna get this going. Make us run out of clickers at the town meeting.
I think these two are exactly the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I again, you know, go, go to Medway, you gotta show. Show, show, hey, this is, this is what can happen. I mean, our, our field, I think we, we, we literally told the school to come back next year because we didn't have the funds to. To to do the field.
No.
So if you, you want that to happen, if you, you think that the, this can do it.
Yeah.
Go, go, stand on the field, show it. Show us a dog park. This is what Belling, if you think this is what Bellingham needs. Cause people can talk about it all day long, but you have a video of you standing in that beautiful dog park, sake of argument, Franklin.
Yeah.
Has a very beautiful dog park. You want this in Bellingham, if you guys have, you know, one of your dogs, bring your dog and let your dog have a field day.
Yeah.
Show your dog having, you show, show that there's something there to have, not just words. Show them, because not everybody, I wouldn't have known about the Franklin Dog Park if it wasn't for Facebook and my, and my wife being like, hey, this is a beautiful dog park in Franklin. So I, I, I think if you guys can do it, make, make us run out of clickers. Bye, Dan.
I just, um. Whether we agree with it or not, I think the most important thing is gonna be town meeting and that's gonna give you a tell-all of what's gonna happen, how people feel. People are very nervous about their taxes now because the. The values of our houses are absolutely ridiculous, high. And 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 I really feel that it's, they're ridiculously high. And so that's everybody's, even though we kept the tax rate as is.
Yeah.
Everybody's taxes are gonna go up because the values have all gone up. So when you look at these little houses over there, these people are like, what the heck? You know, I mean, and it's, it's a tough time for people. So as much as this may be a great thing for Bellingham, I think you're. Where you're gonna see it will be at town meeting, cause this will draw people in big time to be there. And I think. That's, that's how I feel. Listen, if people want this, then let them vote for it and decide and that's great.
Yeah.
But if people don't want it, they have to have that voice too. So I think this is a perfect outlet for them to do it.
Yeah, like, like you said, it gives them two chances to do that, so.
Yeah, and and that's great, that's great. You know, but I would say. If you're gonna put it on the warrant for the town meeting in May. We got time still. Yeah, yeah. I would. I would get yourselves. An attorney. Who can draw up your motions and put this on and put it together for you.
One of the benefits of the community preservation coalition is they have all that drafted up this.
Yeah, so.
At least we have tons of examples.
But I would get, I would do and get it so that you know it's gonna be on the warrant. Cause you're gonna have to go through the whole process of being on the warrant too, so. I would just get it going.
You looking for a motion from us or? No, just do you, do we may we do an.
I know unless the article needs, wants to be um presented by the select board, otherwise it would be presented by citizens.
I think so. Anybody else have any input?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jesse.
We should bury.
Hello.
Hi.
We have a brief presentation for tonight. Um we'll keep it very high level. Already one slide, so a lot of photos, uh from, from the season, so. Uh able to show what we've done. Alright, so good evening. Thank you all for your time tonight. Um tonight, we have a PowerPoint presentation on Bellingham's. pavement management program. Next slide, please. Introductions, uh my name Jesse Ryle, for those of you that don't know, uh DPW director. And I'm joined tonight with Barry LaRiviere, our uh DPW project manager. Next slide, please. Uh so for tonight, uh the purpose of the presentation is to summarize our current conditions, share the findings of the pavement management program. Discuss the long-term impacts, uh present recommendation, uh recommended funding levels and request select board support. Next slide, please. With that, I'll hand it over to Barry.
Good evening. Thanks for having us in. Uh I'll keep my part quick. Uh I can get really, really technical and I don't wanna bore you all, so uh. We'll keep it uh quick. So benefits of the pavement manager program, so it helps us uh. Protects our community investments by maximizing lifespan of our roadways, um helps us minimize costs and maximizing value. Applying the appropriate roadway treatments at the correct locations and time. Uh provides foundation for key decision-making. It allows us to be more proactive than reactive in our decisions when we decide to do roadway projects. Um so the pavement measure program history, um actually started in Bellingham in the late nineties, early two thousands with yours truly. Uh we actually drove around town. Using paper and visually inspecting the roads and then putting it into a computer. Uh over the years, it's developed, um the town moved from the VHB program to the Beta Program. Um that's been consistently uh the vendor we've been using over the last few years. It went from computer and visual inspections. Uh to their spring, uh the inspections we had in spring of twenty twenty-five, where we actually used light art. Computer and visual inspection. So the, that vehicle actually drove every street. Took pictures, uh segments of road, um brought in all that information, analyzed it through a computer. Uh boots on the ground, the human eyes still play an important aspect into verifying and confirming the information. As part of the, the pavement measure program, we actually looked at our, our roadway profile. I know a lot of work had been done on accepting roads in town. Um like historically, you know, it was a hot mess. Uh so right now, we have about ninety, ninety-four point six. Uh accepted asphalt roadways with about zero point three three being gravel. Uh then you can see the other breakdowns in the roadways in our network. We have unaccepted private state. For a total about a hundred and ten point four three miles of road in Bellingham. So the program is a, is a grading system, thinking it, think of it as easy as A through F. Um RSR, the road surface rating, is a number value that we associate with the roads. Zero being the worst, one hundred being the best. Those categories allow us to break down the different types of repair strategies. Uh there's no ma, A would be no maintenance, excellent road. B would be some preventative maintenance required, uh excuse me, routine maintenance. C is preventative. D would be minor rehabilitation and F is the road is awful, we're rebuilding a thing, ripping it all up. Um. And with that, the banding and the classifications from A through, A through F is a cost value. B is the cheapest, F is the most expensive. And Jesse's got some information that he wants to provide on, on clarifying the classifications.
Uh so I just wanted to take the opportunity to really, um you know, break this down for the layman, um in terms of something we can all relate to. Um most people here in Bellingham have vehicles, um and to put it frank. Uh comparing the process that we plan to apply to the roads. Uh to to relate it to what you would do to your typical uh vehicle maintenance. So um. On the chart here, you have, um you know, the, the least costly to the most costly from top to bottom, uh and how it. How you could translate that to vehicle maintenance. So for example, the low-cost items such as uh crack seal and chip sealing and overlays. Would be similar to your oil changes or tire rotations on your vehicle. It's, it's very inexpensive. It's a well worthwhile endeavor and neglecting to do so will only uh relate to more expensive costly uh repairs down the road. Um and for example, I'll jump down to the full reconstruction. That would be similar to it, having to replace your vehicle entirely. It's. It's the most expensive process. Obviously, we wanna get ahead of that, um prolong the life of the roadways, similar to our vehicles. As long as we can, um with the most cost-effective approach. So I found this a very simplistic way to, to view this. Something that most of us can relate to, um and get out of this mentality that, hey, we just paved it. We're good for the next twenty to thirty years. Well, you wouldn't buy a vehicle and not expect to do oil changes over the next twenty to thirty years. We really need to view our roads in that same manner. So just a very simple way to put it.
Um next, we just have some representative slides so people have an understanding of what an A road would be, a B road. You go to this one, a C road, a couple of different examples there. Uh the next slide would be your F roads. So it just gives you an idea, so we talk about it. So. Part of the program is an existing condition analysis. So when it takes all the information, assigns dollar values with it and gives us an estimated cost. Um it breaks down the roadway by re- by repair types. So we have, you know, about ten miles and no maintenance required. Uh twenty-two miles in routine maintenance, so that's that crack seal we're talking about. Preventive maintenance is around twenty-three miles and if you look. Our Ds and Fs, our road, our forty percent of our roadway network is in that. Um so ask me, you know, if we. What's the number? So if we go out today, pave all the roads, we're not talking drainage, sidewalks, anything else, we're twenty-one million dollars. To do everything. Just our Ds and Rs, we're at eighteen million. And that's just paving roads. We're not touching sidewalks or fixing anything else. So it's just making roads black. Um so our network, our overall network rating is a sixty-six point two three.
Barry.
Sure.
Can you go back to previous slide? But what's the percentage in your D and F of primary and secondary roads? And if you can give an example.
That'd be a, a break, I can get you that breakdown.
You're not going, because then there's another level, I believe. You've got your primary Route one twenty-six, Hartford Avenue, et cetera. Then you have secondary roads that aren't as widely traveled, but they could be a D or an F.
Yeah, so there's a prioritize based on primary. So there's a slide we're gonna get to that talks about different prioritization processes, something we wanna discuss with the board. Uh to kinda let you show, there's a lot of options out there. There's a lot of ways we could. Do this. Uh just a general map showing the, the road network, red being the worst, the dark blue being the best. Um as you can see, it sticks out at you. We have a lot of red roads. So unfortunately, you know, based on, on the breakdown, we're in the worst first. We're, we're replacing our cars. Uh we haven't done that maintenance over the years. Um so we're gonna be spending the most amount of money to repair our roads. So twenty twenty-five, uh we had one point four million dollars available for roadway paving and roadway projects. And again, it wasn't just straight paving. We had some drainage projects, so we had some ADA improvements, but gave us. We actually implemented crack seal this year. It hadn't been done in a long time, so we brought that back. So we did about six miles of crack seal. Um. Different levels and different paving treatments. We did levels and overlays, full depth reclamation. Out of all of our projects, we had a couple that we had to carry over. Just ran out of time this season, so Elmo Street, Blackmar, Douglas Drive, Rome Avenue and Common Street will be carried over to the spring. Uh just gives you an idea of what we did this year for one point four million. Um and the next slide is just a, basically just a spreadsheet showing the. The extents of every road and all the things that were done in every roadway. This giving you more information. Uh these are some photos of before and afters. Uh Benelli Street, there was an F. Now it's an A. Uh Glen Street, we did a lot of work here. We actually redid some drainage. Uh one of the things you'll notice on a lot of the roads, I'm putting in monolithic berm. Um so one of the things that's kinda happened in the past is roads with hills, they would get paved, berm wasn't put in. Then the DPW would have to go back later to put berm in. Uh so we're actually looking at roads ahead of time. And then coming up with the best process we can. Uh the next slide is the other end of Glen Street. Uh Glen Street was a, was an interesting one. Uh Mansion Street, we got rid of that giant puddle. Did a little super elevation there and then some uh base work with that to get rid of the puddle, cause I hated driving through that thing. It was huge. Uh next one, uh Ray Avenue, Ray Avenue was an interesting project, so we actually ended up. Ripping that up, installing some under drains. Uh there was some high groundwater that was coming off of people's yards or actually ruining the roads. We put in some under drains over there and actually rebuilt a little bit of sidewalk. And then Arrowhead, so Arrowhead, again, it was a drainage project. Uh was a melon overlay project and we actually did some ADA sidewalk enhancements at the Hartford Avenue of the project. So our next steps, you know, we're talking about our, our capital planning and prior prioritization. Actually putting the information we have from the pavement program to use. Uh this is a bit of a snapshot. Of the annual funding that we, the town gets from the state. So it's chapter ninety, the fair share. Uh the state's been adding these little rural road, uh roadway project fundings or fair share funding. Um our average, you can see, is about that five thirty-nine. Uh there was a bump this year. A very large bump, which actually allowed us to do more work than we anticipated. Um but our, you know, our state funded a- average, our state funding average for three years is about eight sixty-four and our town funding is about three twenty-two. Um and this is important, cause when we get to the next slide, you're gonna see. The money ask. So as part of the program, there's actually a capital planning worksheet. So this allows us to input Bellingham's information. Road miles, different types of. Uh funding strategies and come up with a game plan moving forward. Uh so the next slide will show you. What we need. If a, if a sixty-six is where their town wants to stay with the roadways, uh it's about one point two five million a year. Anything below that, we're, we're dropping. Um the, the pie graph on the left-hand side, I've kind of adjusted to reflect what our network looks like. So yes, fifty percent is in reclamation and redoing roads. Um. We don't have a lot of preventive maintenance. We don't have a lot of things to do, cause we are unfortunately, we're in that worst first scenario. Um so anything less than that, like million two average per year, and that's just paving. That's not drainage work or anything else. We're gonna be dropping over time. And this, this is what I was talking about regarding considerations. How do we pick the roads? We could look at condition, we can look at the functional classification, Don, like you were, you were referencing. Um is it an RSR-driven program? Hey, does the town of Bellingham wanna be an eighty? And we need this much money to get there, or do we wanna value less than that? Um we wanna maximize our available dollars. Should we just wanna say, this is the pool of money that we have, go out and get it done? Um the Roads Committee does look, listen to resident complaints. Um several roads for. Planning for next year's paving project are resident complaint roads that are on our list. Um do we wanna look at major infrastructure products only? Now the town's been successful with TEP. But TEP is a big project, takes a lot of time. You need money to get it done. Do we wanna start adding subsurface? Do we wanna completely redo roads instead of just paving roads? We wanna look at drainage, water, sewer. Uh do we wanna add sidewalks and curb ramps? And we pave a road, we wanna get everything else done. And one of the things I look at too, uh for planning and logistics is. The geographic location and proximity. You know, this year we had a good spread of towns in the north, uh roads in the north and roads in the south. Do we wanna focus on the north? Do we wanna focus on the south? So these are all components of the program that the DPW is looking at internally. Our goal is to create a three-to-five-year roadway plan that we can follow. And put, set us up to be proactive versus reactive where we are right now. So some of our next steps, so this is part of the big picture. Um. Roadway asset management is part of the program. Um. We're looking at our vegetation management program, so that money was approved, so we'll be moving on with that one. Our next big one is gonna be the sidewalk inventory and ADA transition plan. Just like having a rating for the roadways and dollar values associated that. We like to have a rating for our sidewalks and a dollar value associated. We like to have a rating for our sidewalks and a dollar value associated with that. So when I look at paving a road. I know it's three hundred thousand dollars to do the sidewalk as well, if we want to go down that avenue. Uh Bridge and Culver inventory, that's another one. And of course, all of our utility infrastructure. Um again, the idea is to build these programs so that we can capital plan and that dollar value is for you for the future.
All right. So with that, uh the additional funding enables proper sequencing of treatments. Expanded crack sealing, overlays and chip seals, reduction on emergency patching uh patching. Reconstruction limited to areas beyond repairs and smoother, safer and more reliable network. Next slide, please. Um so our request to select forward action would be to endorse the pavement management plan. Support recommended annual funding strategies, authorize capital requests towards supporting key uh paving efforts. And approve local match or supplemental funding as needed. Our closing thoughts on this, that a successful pavement management program functions as a long term saving strategy. Through a preventative maintenance approach. Today's targeted investments keep roads smoother, safer and significantly less costly to maintain in the years ahead. Are there any questions?
Well, I think Barry can appreciate this one. Being a marine, I mean, I didn't realize this was much into it. I've seen combat engineers and CBs get a road done and paved in a week.
Right?
Um wow. Um I mean. This, yeah. Jen?
I have a couple of questions and I I apologize if they're not as well thought through as maybe your presentation was, but. So in the remediation process going forward, is there a current plan that will protect what's already been done? But do they do they go in parallel with each other?
Yes.
Okay, right. And I figured it would be. Second of all, I know a lot of our roads get chewed up from how from plowing and whatnot. Is that something that we're addressing as well to protect the roads that are going to be down to ensure their condition? I mean, is that something that we should look at? As how we're how we're handling the roads once they've been treated?
So the the interesting thing is is the asphalt has changed over the years. Um so we have to use superpave as a mastio T spec. They kind of came, so they're, again, I'm gonna geek out on asphalt boy because I love. But there's there's different, there's different classifications and sizing of asphalt, right? So because towns were asphalt plants were making this and making that, they tried to standardize it to use superpave. Superpave is a rigid asphalt, right? Great for highways, great for engineered roads, roadways. A lot of majority of the roadways in Bowleyham were cart paths, old road built in the fifties. To my surprise, I thought we had base issues. I thought the bases of the roads in town, we have high groundwater. We have certain areas where that affects the road. The biggest problem here was that the asphalt had been on for so long. In a lot of roads, it was only this thick. So what we do if I'm if we're reclaiming a road, which is bringing it down the dirt, rebuilding it back up. We put a base, two inches of asphalt, then we put an inch and a half top. So the idea is moving forward, the road gets plowed damage, you get a pothole, we're only milling an inch and a half off. We're never going back down to the base. So I wish I could stop the roads from getting ripped up by plows.
So you so you see them all the time, right? Like you put all this money in. Don't know the money. And we want, you know, we all, we hear it all the time. People complain about their roads and they are not.
Doing doing, yeah, doing the strategies that we're trying to try now will make our loads. Roads last longer.
That's what I'm, that's not what I'm looking for.
They're not gonna last as long as they used to. That has completely changed though. In 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 my world, it used to roads used to be twenty-five to thirty years. It's not happening. Uh asphalt's changed, vehicles are heavier, tons of things that go into it. By do but reclaiming the road, doing the two inch with that one one and a half top, we have to come and repair it. It's easier and cheaper.
And then we come back around and reassessing what we've done to make sure that it's staying at that A or B level.
Yeah.
We're maintaining that.
The cool thing about this program is actually a golden deterioration curve. So the road actually deteriorates over the year. So the road starts at a fifty. It could go down to a forty-eight. We have a bad winter. We can actually go in and adjust the road to a number that we think it is. While we pave roads, we're making those a hundred. So the program's interactive and always doing its thing. Um which is really cool uh because it allows us real world information and we can adjust the program to how we want.
I I appreciate that. Thank you.
So Jesse and Barry, you asking for a blank check?
Yeah.
Because that's kind of how you ended it.
You know, I I guess our thought was is getting, you know, looking at those strategies, you know, getting some direction from the board. Um where you guys would like to go. Um you know, do we want to pick an RSR number? Do we want to look at spending, you know, a certain amount of money per year? And again, focusing on paving roads, um yeah, we're gonna have drainage issues and things like that, but to get that rating. To a level where we want the six to sixty-six relatively compared to the air, the towns around us isn't that good. Um most towns, like I say Franklin, Norfolk, Medway, Medfield going that way, the towns are in their seventies. Um Blackstone is is about a seventy-two. They they've invested in their program. I guess that's what we were looking for. It's just giving us.
I I don't have a problem with giving you saying, yeah, I love what you're doing. But it all is gonna come down to funding at the end of the day, right? And it's up to the Roads Committee to determine from a priority standpoint what roads need to be done. You know, in prioritizing the right way. So I think for me, yeah, what you're doing is fantastic. However, it's gonna come down to funding at the end of the day.
Yes.
We just don't have a blank check. And even though you go to the town meetings, everybody screams about roads. But if you ask them for an override to fix roads, you're not gonna get it. They're gonna scream all day long. They want better roads. But I'll I I'll argue with you anecdotally about roads in Medway compared to roads in Bowleyham. We have a lot more roads in Bowleyham, which is probably why. Their roads aren't nearly in that good a shape. Maybe they they just repaved some roads, but. I hope, you know, just travel a lot there in rough shape too.
Yeah.
And we do a much, and I think plowing, you can't beat this town for plowing compared to other towns.
Barry, you paved Franklin, right?
Uh Norfolk.
Uh how many roads were, you know, how many roads are in Norfolk?
Oh, I know this all the time away. Uh we had eighty-four road miles. Uh when I got there, we were a fifty-six. Um in seven years, we paved roughly thirty miles of road. That was hammered down.
Yeah. Do you know approximately what Franklin has?
Where is it?
Uh it'd be way up there.
Two, two hundred?
Just just curious.
Well, it's all, it's basically, it's all, it's it's tough because I know. It it's all relative, right? Um because you can look at weight miles and road mile and, you know, chapter ninety and things like that. A lot of it like Franklin's program is completely different than Bowleyham's, right? Franklin does chip seals on cul-de-sacs and dead ends. You know, that saves a lot of money. The residents have gotten used to it.
Mm-hmm.
I know we tried that in Bowleyham and it didn't work out so well. So there's a, there's a lot of, you know, every town does different repair strategies. Medway does a lot of uh chip seals um and rubber rubber overlays. Whereas Bowleyham has been pretty much just overlays and mills.
Let me ask you this. Doesn't it make more sense? I mean, this is just me, but make more sense to if you're gonna do a road. You're gonna do the whole thing complete. You're gonna do the drainage. You're gonna do the whole thing. I mean, I can't see going to do just. A chip seal and and pave over it and you still have a drainage issue sitting there or you still have a sidewalk issue there. To me, that's that's. It it's not cost effective because you're not really fixing the road because the road's gonna be a mess because it's got a drainage issue.
The problem with that.
We found that out on Rentham Road many, many times, so.
But that's about a million bucks a mile.
I mean. To me, it's like if you're gonna present, present to do the full thing. That's how I feel.
But if if we need one point two five to keep us going, and it's a million bucks a mile, so we're doing a mile of road a year, soup and nuts.
Which is nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That that's our, that's our problem.
I know.
We've been discussing this internally. You know, we have AC water needs. I can't, I can't tell you if it's gonna break.
Without doing the whole thing.
Yeah.
Right. I mean. That's my big complaint about Bowleyham is we do things halfway and we don't do it the full way like the first time. We end up paying for it in the end.
I think one of the reasons for for having Jesse come in was was for just identifying what what has been been done. The overall condition and to sort of almost like set the table because we're at this. This point where we have a lot of um projects that are. Uh sort of starting up to build up and we need to identify a strategy. And some of that is using grant programs, safe uh routes to school grant program. We're we're definitely taking advantage of the tip. But those are things that take a good amount of time. And money to do. And then, yes, you get the the state to take care of four miles sidewalk and all that. Um but you know, some of the the calls that come into my office, and it started on my second day here, they they finally found me. Um was, you know, specific streets and some of them down um in South Bowleyham. Because I saw one a block over, it said, why was that paved? Mine is just as bad. Um part of this is communicating also to the residents that, you know, we're trying to find that equilibrium between. Maintaining the road system, but not overburdening and finding a way of. Is there a longer term plan where we can uh take care of, say, funding, even if it was for a short. Three year period to take some of the worst off and then paper down. But developing that plan involves, like you said. Talking to the road committee, talking with DPW, identifying what would work. Uh because um we can't do it all at once, but also. Staying um at our current funding source. Uh. Not being able to trust on the state coming in like they did last year.
Right.
Um that eventually our rating will go down and that's not something that people will will want to see either. Um so I think as we look forward to January, you know, coming back and having. A discussion or some sort of workshop with the board to. How can we prioritize and what are some of the um tools that we can use for this may be beneficial?
Now, Jesse, is this gonna have? Funny, I know you're asking for us to basically give you a blank check. Uh. Wait, in terms, what's the impact gonna be on the taxes for the residents?
Right. So I I think that's uh part of the conversation that we'll have to have, you know, in terms of what we have available, where we would like to see the roads. Uh continue at. Um you know, if it's a situation where there's just quite frankly, not enough as it is. These are conversations that I think is related and I will have to, um you know, strategize.
Nothing will be committed to until we we know what the dollar value is gonna be. And then they're gonna come back to us and just say, hey, guys, this is. This is what we're asking.
Yeah, I I think one of the big takeaways is, uh you know, thi- this presentation is really to show, you know, what we're up against. We're trying to stretch our dollar as far as.
You're pushing them all the way up ahead.
Yes, um and unfortunately, we're at the the this uh the point now where we're addressing the worst first. Because of this necessity. We we can't neglect these roads because they're in such bad shape. Um ideally, we would get to more of a proactive approach where it's much cheaper to maintain. We'll stretch our dollar much farther. But in some of these locations, we have no other choice. So it there may be a period of time where, you know, additional funding may go uh a long ways to get ahead of that. And then get it uh to a point where we can be more proactive as opposed to reactive.
All right. I know this is, you guys got a lot of work because this is also a manpower manpower issue.
Um so in terms of the actual paving, uh typically, this is uh operations that we contract out. It's it's just a very large endeavor for a- any DPW to take over. So. Um yeah, as far as our our crew, our staffing, uh when it comes to paving. Um you know, actually, believe it or not, if we ever get to that proactive approach. Things like potholes um would become less of an issue and it would actually free up manpower.
So if you notice around around town lately, we're doing more section patching. Um so I'm kind of working with the highway guys instead of going out and just filling out someone filling this one. Hey, let's cut it out. Let's. Let's do the best we can. Um it's kind of interesting. It's a, you know, it's a new process. A lot of these guys haven't done it, but you're gonna see. More and more streets where we're gonna be doing certain patches.
So to to the the chair just said, I was thinking about capacity planning. So as you're looking at what you're prioritizing. And thinking about what we might have to ask the taxpayers or residents for, is there an ideal like capacity planning? So like we can really only do about three million dollars worth of road in an annual season. That'll be a great number to have because we're not asking for the thirty million we know we really need ultimately. But we're not asking for that. We're saying, hey, there's about thirty-three million dollars worth of capacity plan we can do a year. So what we're asking for is, hey, we have one point four, but we need another one point six.
Right.
And plan it over that way because you really only, there's only so many contractors out there, right?
Yep.
There's only so many DPW workers. So it's not an infinite amount. It's you've got a finite, like. I don't know what that number is. I think there were number out there.
You you hit you hit it on the head. It's about one point six. The one one point four uh was a stretch this year. She's doing some math in my head.
Yeah, um contractor wise, we had a decent contractor, but to your point, our contractor was involved in several other communities. Um so then we had issues with that. Uh we are looking at some other strategies for for contractors and bidding. But we we don't look at that. But the one point six is about our number.
Yeah, and I I think one of the things is also coming uh with scenarios that. I mean, you have the amount that manpower is and also pound staff has to oversee some of the work. Um we're just not letting the contracts on contractors do the work on.
So much project.
Unsupervised.
That Barry can do.
I was literally on every job, boots on the ground throughout the summer.
So there is a capacity issue, but also, you know, tied to that funding is also understanding. What are we getting out of that? You know, um do you get a lot for, say, an extra two hundred thousand dollars, you know, being allocated? And that's some of the things that uh working with Jesse Barry and and quite frankly, also with Heidi. Get an understanding as far as what that bang for the dollar is. So that you can say like, you know, plan things out and say, you know, this may be a a three year commitment. Because it gets us to a certain point. And then after that, it's a little little easier. But that's where I think over the next forty-five days, we'll be working to provide that additional. Say, level of scenario building to then come back for the select board and finance. As part of just a overall strategy on how to move that needle forward. Because we have other projects that this is not gonna be, you know, by itself in a vacuum.
But I'll use a term that um the Patriots are using in about five minutes. Have a playbook. Have a playbook, right? The three year plan, have that playbook in place and describe it very specifically. To us and to the taxpayers because when you have a plan and it's solid and you try to. Blow holes into the whole bit and you've done all of that, when you present it. You're just not asking for money. You have a very specific use for those funds and why? Why those streets?
That's that's kind of a goal of having a program with the president. That's what we want to get. Um. So just giving you our ideas. It's common.
Anybody else have any input?
No.
All right, do I have?
One comment. Um these guys are doing a phenomenal job. Um but to what Anna had said too, I think. Um looking holistically, and I know Barry had mentioned it, one of the assessments they want to do, but looking at, you know, your sewer, your water. Your drainage and doing those things maybe on certain streets before you before paving. And I think that sometimes. Paving has kind of taken the first course. And then, you know, other things happen and then now that new paving is ripped up, right? So. Um so again, maybe to Don's point is putting that together in that picture. Um so you have a holistic plan, so hopefully people could buy into it.
Right.
Are you DPW in a neighboring community?
Franklin. I'm the water sewer superintendent, so that's why.
Oh. Are you, oh, Brutus?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any uh? Now, do I have a um motion to basically support DPW as presented?
So I I'll make a motion to to support the DPW as in their endeavor.
A second. Second. All those in favor?
I oppose.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you all for your time.
You need some CBs. I know a few guys that can come in and they'll they'll have the whole town done in a week.
For only that easy.
Step one, we gotta play that money dream.
You get them from Copenhagen. I think uh Copenhagen and.
Thank you again.
All right, do I?
I'm gonna make a motion at the Board of Selectmen, accept the gifts and grants as listed herein. With set expenditures to be under the direction of the parties noted. And it's uh three hundred dollars, Bowleyham Elder Service Incorporated donation. With the fire prevention account and the spending authority is the fires department.
Wait a second. All those in favor?
Bye.
Oppose none.
I have a uh motion for the authorization. I've read a entry agreement with Algonquin.
So we're gonna authorize um the town administrator to sign the license agreement. For the right of entry into the town.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose none, five of them.
Who's the second?
Yeah.
Me.
You can put me down.
Okay, thanks.
Nathan parole business. I think Mrs. Altamonte is gonna start with the new business.
Oh, new business, and so our upcoming parade is happening on December thirteenth at five o'clock at, um, Bellingham. Memorial School, step office at five o'clock. Uh, we will roll down to, uh, a three hundred park, which I call it lovingly. It's not really the official name, but we'll roll out here. And we will light a tree and then continue on the Spartan Fitness where, um, Spartan is hosting a little holiday gathering. Um, we're about, I think at this point, about fifteen vehicles. Fifteen people, and then they have multiple vehicles within, so it, so far we're shaping up, so there's still plenty for everyone who wants to join. You can certainly message me or whoever else was on the, um, the committee and we'll get you in, so. Come along.
All right. And I have one, uh, the town common has a menorah now, uh, for those that celebrate Hanukkah. Um, the Greater Milford Havod Center is gonna be doing the official menorah lighting ceremony Sunday, December fourteenth. At five P M, uh, down at the town common. Uh, I need to thank, to thank, uh, Tim Akati, uh, who put it together with our town carpenter. You know?
Ron Paulis.
Ron?
And Ken Quay, yeah.
Ron and Ken, uh, from the facilities department.
Yep, they're, they're a, um, part-time carpenters.
Okay, they did a great job. It's a beautiful menorah. I actually encourage you to go take a look, it's up at the common. Um, and that was, uh, an effort that was brought to me, uh, by the Greater Milford Havod Center. Um, I think they are going to be doing, um, lighting and it's gonna be a, uh, it seems like a great little, uh. Little event, Hanukkah is, uh, seven, seven days. Yeah, seven days, so there's one light for every day. Hey, sorry, yeah, sorry, Adam Sandler would be very ashamed of me. Um, so, uh, we have that. Anyone else? New business? Joe?
Okay, so I'm gonna start off a little effective. I was, uh, had the pleasure. Joining everyone Saturday night at, attending the Bellingham Town Common Tree Lighting Ceremony and I. Uh, have the honor of flipping the switch to light up the tree in the common.
That's a big honor. Big honor.
Uh, there is, uh, for everyone that, uh, may visit town hall, there's a Toys and Thoughts drop box. Here at the municipal center, uh, we're gonna be accepting donations through December eighth. Also, the police department has an annual giving tree, uh, tags have requests for children in Bellingham for the holidays. Unwrapped items should be, be dropped off no later than December fifteenth. Uh, also, police department is holding a munchkins with Santa on Saturday, December thirteenth. From ten A M to eleven thirty at the police station, uh, uh. Stop on by, say hi, enjoy some treats and get your pic, picture taken with Santa. The Council on Aging also has a sharing tree. At the senior center, sharing tree will be up through December twelfth. And, uh, the Bellingham Fire Department was conducting a toy drive on Saturday, November twenty-eighth at Walmart. Coming up on Monday, December eighth, the Age and Dementia Friendly Task Force. And the Center for Social and Demographic Research on Aging at U M S Boston. Will be presenting the results of the needs assessment on Monday, December eighth at six thirty P M. Uh, rest, uh, R S V P with the senior center, um, for people that sign up in advance, uh, they will be serving some food. Um, I don't know what's on the menu, but at least, uh, that caught my attention. Uh, on, uh, just a couple remaining updates. Town of Bellingham recently was awarded one hundred and thirty-five thousand from the Housing Choice Grants Program. To conduct a pre-development feasibility study on the five-point-five acre parcel owned by Bellingham Housing Authority. Town of Bellingham was also just, uh, submitted, uh, to M A P C. Uh, technical assistance grant application, uh, the purpose of this, uh, proposed project that we're seeking assistance with. Is to, uh, further enhance housing choices in the community by providing additional housing units, promote pedestrian. Uh, promote a pedestrian corridor and create an economic development catalyst for. Bellingham, Bellingham's underutilized properties right here in Bellingham Center. And then also, I know, um, you know, we're glad to have Fall Town Meeting right behind us. We're starting. The F Y twenty-seven budget process and I'm having conversations with department heads. Uh, department budgets are due December seventeenth. We are also now less than two months away from opening the warrant. Last year, warrant was opened on January twenty-seventh and I'll work with Hillary on pulling together. A, uh, schedule and a calendar, so. Uh. Start, get them ready for the new year and start this all over again.
Kind of like Groundhog Day, isn't it?
Year after year, yes.
All right, have, having fulfilled the agenda, do I have a motion to hold an executive session pursuant to general law?
No.
We don't.
We're not doing any executive session.
Oh, it's not crossed off.
Sorry, it's just a game day decision.
Oh. All right there.
That's because of Patriots.
All right.
Sorry, I thought we, I thought you knew. My apologies.
Ready to do it, so.
Hit me on the side of the head.
Sorry, we can do it if you want.
All right, having fulfilled the agenda, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, all those in favor? All right, pose none, five oh. Have a good night, go Pat, all right?
Thank you all.
Thank you.